Testing. Are we live?
Yes.
Good evening and welcome to our board meeting. Today is Tuesday, May 17th. Members present in the boardroom, we have members Lessons, Jacobs, Holloman, Donley, and Bellamy. Members online, we have members Wilson. And we will advise with member Higgins joins us. In the boardroom, we have our student representative, Ms. Shaw. We have Dr. Bishop. And we have Katie Grant, our executive assistant. As well as tonight, we also have our incoming superintendent, Dr. Bryant. Welcome, Dr. Bryant. With that, please join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great flag for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, whenever you're ready, Ms. Shaw.
On behalf of the Anchorage School Board, I want to take a moment to recognize and offer gratitude for the sacred ancestral lands of the Denali people. We acknowledge and appreciate that our offices, facilities, and schools are on these sacred indigenous lands, and we honor the traditional care that has been given to this land throughout generations. We are grateful for the opportunity to grow, learn, work, and create educational communities on the sacred land. We extend continued respect for the many cultures, creativity, and resilience of us indigenous peoples. Chinon.
And thank you very much. So we would also like to welcome everyone to our meeting. Thank you for attending. As you can see or tell, we have a very special evening ahead. But we do want to thank our students, our parents, our teachers, staff, and our partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district with your time, your talents, and your tax dollars. That brings us to item three on the agenda, the approval of the agenda.
Madam President, I move to approve the agenda as presented. Saka.
Moved in second to approve. We have one, I have one adjustment. Because of the unique structure of our meeting tonight, I'd like to move three student testimonies up to after the military report. If there's no objection. We have three students that signed up. Seeing no objection. We'll make that adjustment to the agenda. Now we'll vote on the agenda. Any objection? Oh, we do have two people online. Do we have to do a voice? Or just approval? We good? Okay. Seeing no objections. The agenda is approved with that one adjustment, moving three students following the military report. Thank you. And that brings us to our student advisory report. Ready?
Alrighty, so SAB, or Student Advisory Board, held their last meeting on April 12th, where we had our end-of-the-year celebrations and we elected our vice president secretary and elected a new public relations officer. Outside of SAB, graduations have been happening across the district, and we are so proud of the 2022 graduates and the SAB members who were seniors. Students are continuing to complete finals, AP testing, and end-of-the-year projects. And sports like softball, baseball, track and field, women's and men's soccer are still happening across the district. So make sure you can go out and go and support these hard-working athletes. This has been my first full year of high school as a junior. And being a part of SAB and being student representative for the school board have both been a blast, and I can't wait to serve these positions next year.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. And we love having you. Any questions for Ms. Shaw from the board? All right, thank you, great report. And now that brings us to our military report. And that would be, is that Chief David Sloan, Colonel Delamater? Thank you, sir. And Mr. Richard Tony. Welcome. Nope.
Check, check.
Okay. Hey, good evening, everybody. My name is Jason Delamater. I'm the 673rd Mission Support Group Commander at the installation. And this is my first time physically coming to the school board meeting, and unfortunately, it's going to be my last because I'm rotating. But I wanted to come tonight, and if you'll indulge me for a second, to recognize two phenomenal partners that we've had for the team at Joint Base Elmenorf-Richardson. And I'd like to start off with a good friend of mine, Mr. Tom Roth. Mr. Thompson, if you could, please, sir. Is Michelle and Megan here?
Yes.
Come on up, ladies. Come on up, ladies. This is a family affair. So the great thing about being a Colonel in the United States Air Force is they let me give out medals. And we have a very special one tonight. The military typically bestows medals on other service members for acts of heroism or meritorious achievement, those kind of things. But we also make sure we have an opportunity to recognize the folks in our civil communities and our community partners that play a significant role in supporting the men and women that choose to serve and put on a uniform every day to protect this country. And Mr. Roth, you're one of them, sir. You've been a fantastic partner, whether it's the late-night phone calls, figuring out that we're going to close schools because of road conditions, or there's a wreck on the Glen, and we've got to squirt buses through the base to get them to school on time. You've just been a great partner and a great friend for the installation. And I hope that when I had a chance to take the uniform off, if there's room to be the chief of the Tom Roth Fan Club, there's room for me at the table. So with that, normally, we stand for attention when we give out a medal, but you don't have to. But if you choose to please stand in recognition, I'd appreciate it, so please stand. Public the order.
Attention to order. Department of the Air Force presents the Commander's Public Service Award to Thomas J. Roth. In recognition of his distinguished performance as Anchorage School District's Chief Operating Officer from 28 July 2015 to 5 August 22, during this period, Mr. Roth provided oversight and direction for the Anchorage School District's administrative programs to include risk management, health services, student nutrition, ground transportation, and preventive maintenance measures. His ability to provide effective oversight to 100 schools and 6,000 personnel while simultaneously leading six elementary schools on Joint Base Elmenorf-Richardson ensured the success of the local school district. Finally, Mr. Roth ran the largest immunization clinic in Anchorage during the COVID-19 and implemented staff and contract testing capability throughout every school. The distinctive accomplishments of Mr. Roth reflect the highest credit upon himself and the Department of the Air Force.
Dr. Bishop, please come forward. Is Mr. Bill here as well? Where's Bill? There he is, sir, come on up. So for the last two years, Dr. Bishop, we have a program at the installation where we have honorary commanders that are selected, carefully curated and selected by our installation leadership. And Dr. Bishop was chosen before I got here to be the Mission Support Group Commander, honorary commander. COVID really threw a big fat monkey wrench in that. We didn't really get a chance to do very much stuff together. But I did get her out and got her into a snowplow, so she was riding in the snowplows on the base when it was snowing. And you actually came out and visited with our child and youth staff team, which was a big reason why I was such a big fan of working with you. COVID threw a big fat monkey wrench into the lives of so many men and women in this area, but it especially hit our service members pretty hard. There's not a lot of reach back and support that a lot of folks have here. When they come here, all they have is what's with them. So anything we can do at the installation to try and make that challenge of finding a good place for your children to go to school, and good teachers, and a good curriculum, and then figure out a way to do that virtually with kindergartners? If you're a kindergartner teacher in the room, God bless you, because Zoom with five-year-olds has got to be the toughest thing on the planet. But your teachers did fantastic. They partnered with our child and youth staff. And I consider this to be the highlight of one of my experiences here in Alaska, was working with the Anchorage School District, and specifically with you, ma'am. So if you'll indulge me, please. Please stand again.
Attention to order. Department of the Air Force presents the Commander's Public Service Award to Dina M. Bishop. In recognition of her distinguished performance as Anchorage School District Superintendent from 1 July 2016 to 30 June 2022, during this period, Dr. Bishop led over 6,000 employees operating 100 schools in support of 44,000 students, including six elementary schools on Joint Base Elmenorf-Richardson. Additionally, she secured legislative funding for many value-added programs to include foreign language immersion, an increase in career technical education, and the ability for high school students to attend the University of Alaska Anchorage without tuition cost. Finally, Dr. Bishop led the Anchorage School District through the COVID-19 pandemic, providing crucial care and information to local families, students, and joint-based leadership. Her outstanding efforts provided the city of Anchorage with the largest vaccination site in the state, vaccinating over 1,000 people per day. The distinctive accomplishments of Dr. Bishop reflect the highest credit upon herself and the Department of the Air Force.
And thank you very much. Next, we will have ask our students. Madison Ariola, are you in the room? Yes. Can you come forward with your public comments? Welcome. You have three minutes.
All right. Hello, my name is Madison Ariola, and I am an eighth grader from Begedge Middle School. And I have been a part of the debate program for about three years now. And I'm here to testify that we believe that debate program here at our middle school should be treated just like a sport, including our coaches being paid the same way. Debate has always been treated as an outcast within our school activities, but this is the day where we should all learn to acknowledge otherwise. Many people may believe that debate is less valuable compared to our other activities such as sports, but I will be proving that wrong to you. There are many reasons why debate deserves more recognition, which include that students are being taught and educated about real-world problems and arguments that will affect them to this very day, and they are being given useful skills that even include the ones that you will use for the rest of your life. And for a part of this, it's the fact that also we have coaches that are very dedicated to teaching these students these skills. In debate, kids will have to learn to understand both sides of an issue and come up with many ways to challenge it. And within doing so, they're able to communicate and express themselves better, such as speaking to large groups of people and boosting their confidence. Not only this, but the topics that they are educated on is extremely important knowledge to have, such as learning about history, latest events and issues, the systems of law, finance, et cetera. Students are being introduced to these things at a young age, and it will continue to follow them for the rest of their life. These things can help you with things such as getting a job in the future, or just straight-up communicating better with people. Going back to the part of public speaking, especially when I first joined debate, public speaking was one of the things I hated the most, and I thought I was never going to be good over it. But now I'm way more comfortable stepping up on stage, and I can now speak in front of a crowd, and it's something I love and I'm passionate about. I would have never been able to be this confident if I did not have debate. So, and this skill as well, I use this thing for class assignments, and I also think about how this will affect me for the rest of my life. However, the reasons we are able to do this is because of our coaches, who put a huge amount of dedication into teaching their students to push themselves far. We've had tournaments and state championships just like our sports do. And each and every school here that has debate prepares for these events with lots of hard work. Our coach here, Mr. Ross, for example, at Begedge, has to always keep up to date with our work, even if it's last minute, a night before the tournament. These speeches go up to five minutes long, and this is what he has to be put in charge of. And he has to analyze us and give us much feedback and reasoning, and commits to supporting us, even if it means like dealing with another class which he has admitted. Debate overall gives kids many life-changing experiences and can follow them for the rest of their life. And there's no way that we should continue to ignore these such things that a student will effectively use to continue to do the best in their lives, or even think about pursuing their own interests. So let it be resolved that our debate program will be treated as equal as our other sports, including allowing our coaches to be paid the same way. Thank you.
Thank you, Madison. Next, we have Cyrus Warren. Cyrus, welcome. And you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Cyrus Warren. I've been in the debate program at Begedge for three years, and I am here today to talk about debate. Students in the debate program learn many important skills such as responsibility, public speaking, the ability to craft a well-made argument, knowing how to research and how to find a credible source. All these skills are incredibly valuable later in life. For example, knowing how to craft a well-made argument. If a person wants to apply for a raise, they may have to convince their boss. Students graduating from the debate program will be better prepared to convince their boss compared to other people. Or for another example, knowing how to find a credible source. Too many people these days don't know how to find a credible source and check if a source is credible, and this leads to lots of confusion. Kids learn how to do this in debate. Another important skill is public speaking. Think of presentations, board meetings, and speaking in front of the community. Students will perform many presentations throughout their entire school career and will continue to do so in the future at their jobs. So breaking down the barriers of nervousness around public speaking at a young age is extremely beneficial to all students involved in this wonderful program. Secondly, kid's self-esteem and confidence is boosted immensely by this program. So many times, as I can attest to, and my coach and his colleagues can attest to, a sixth grader will enter the program shy, red-faced, embarrassed to speak in front of more than three people, and only speaks for one minute. By eighth grade, that same student has a confident, dominant personality on and off the podium, feels that speaking to any amount of people less than 15 is boring, and is struggling to contain their ideas into five minutes. This program helps people conquer their fears of public speaking, and in doing so, helps them conquer their other fears. Also in debate, kids learn to see both sides of the story. There's an issue introduced, and everyone has to argue for and against both sides of the issue. This teaches kids to have empathy, have an open mind, and to be able to understand all sides of a problem. For example, let's look at myself and my mindset as a sixth grader. As a sixth grader, before I entered the program, I wasn't so readily willing to hear everyone's opinion. I thought about my opinion, and my opinion was the only right opinion. But now, I realize that this is an uncompassionate, inefficient, and uneducated way to live. Now I make sure to hear both sides of the story before I make snap judgments. Now I make sure to listen to everyone's opinion. Now I can understand why someone believes what they believe, even if I don't agree with it. Thirdly, the amount of work coaches put into their debate team is incredible. Between practices, which last for an hour and a half, looking at kids' speeches later on in the day, giving them feedback, additional Saturday practices, and the tournaments which last all day, debate coaches spend a lot of time working with their students, almost 60 hours, and incredibly committed to them. For example, my coach, Mr. Voss, has been leading the program at Begedge for around nine years, and will continue to lead it for many years to come. Oftentimes, debate coaches put in just as much, if not more, in time into their program as sports coaches do, but they're not compensated nearly the same way. Why is this? The points I mentioned today are just a tiny fraction of all the wonderful benefits that come from this great program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Cyrus. Next, we have Kincaid Jack Calder. Welcome. And you have three minutes.
Hello, members of the school board. My name is Kincaid Calder, an eighth grader and debate student at Romey Middle School. And I am here to tell you why you should make debate an ASD activity. So before I begin, though, I would like to thank all of the coaches who have made this wonderful activity possible for us. And then I will now go into the reasons why we should in fact make this a make this a school-sponsored activity. So first, encourages more participation in the sport because students will be more likely to take a sport than a class that eats up an elective slot. Secondly, debate provides children with essential skills such as how to craft logical arguments or how to do public speaking. These benefits will surely help the children later on in life, no matter what career they go into. And then, so finally, debate can help someone with landing a career in public speaking, such as politics or law, by using the aforementioned skills to further themselves in the career. So to wrap everything up, enacting this motion will encourage more participation and give children essential skills that they can use to help them later on in life. Thank you for listening, and I hope that you will enact this motion, potentially helping scores of children.
Thank you very much. And that concludes our student testimony for, I mean, a public comment. That brings us now to to our Denali awards. Yes, we are now on recognitions. That's item C on the agenda, the Denali Awards for Spring Semester. To Alaskans, Denali means "great one", and the Anchorage School District is proud to have employees that display greatness in the areas of achievement, service, and dedication. This is the highest award offered by the district. Twice each year, supervisors submit nominations, and a panel of ASD employees selects a number of coworkers and teams of colleagues that demonstrate outstanding commitment to the district's mission of educating all students for success in life. We are honored to have two individuals and one group who will be recognized tonight. I will now turn the presentation over to board members who will read the recognitions. Member Holloman, will you please start for us?
Thank you. Please come forward. Kristy Weaver, Kirsten Crane, Barb Dexter, Melissa Abbott, Carolyn Scott, Jill Hess, Josiah Patton, Weesa Wong, and Kristy Jensen.
The Child in Transition Team, CIT, serves the Anchorage School District's students experiencing homelessness and students in foster care, two of the most challenging student populations within the district. CIT strives to meet students and families where they are, both figuratively and literally, if needed, so they can maintain school stability and succeed academically. For many students, they may not know where they are staying that night, but they know they will be sitting at their desk tomorrow morning with their friends and teachers. When a student and family become eligible for services through CIT, the team provides both academic and non-academic supports. The list of supports is extensive, but there are a few areas that really typify the efforts of the CIT team. CIT staff go above and beyond to provide a clear path to graduation for many students. In the past six years alone, through collaboration with Covenant House and United Way of Anchorage, over 600 ASD students got back on track to graduation and received their high school diploma. Many of these students were credit deficient and not on track to graduate. Others were close to graduating but needed the encouragement and opportunities provided by CIT staff.
In addition to academic support, the CIT team strives to provide resources to families to get them back on their feet and on the path to self-sufficiency and permanent housing. Many of the families CIT works with are in crisis and often highly stressed. The CIT team not only listens, but they take the time to hear students and families. They frequently take the time to help a parent unpack their current crisis and attempt to find a solution for the problem. Those solutions may involve helping them complete an application for housing or Head Start, bringing a new backpack to where they are staying, dropping off a hotspot so a student can complete homework, working with campfire to get a student into the program so the parent can continue to work until 5:00 PM, assist an unaccompanied youth applying for food stamp benefits, and strategizing a transportation plan that allows a sixth grader to finish their last year at the elementary school they've attended since kindergarten. To quote a letter of support from Mountain View Elementary School Principal, Christopher Woodward, we have a saying at Title I schools, "Maslow before Bloom." We also say, "We can't teach them if they're not at school." If you combine these two adages, you could use them to sum up the function and mission of the CIT team. With the help of the CIT team, our teachers are able to provide quality education to many students who would not be present or able to receive it on their own. Please join us in thanking the CIT team.
Christopher Lubkin, please come forward. As staff at Service High School enjoy their morning coffee while preparing for students, they are treated many mornings to the melodious music of Services Jazz Band, instructed and conducted by Christopher Lubkin. While staff are collaborating and prepping, Chris is already busy engaging his class with music like Souza the Liberty Bell, The Towering Inferno, and other popular and familiar songs. He is a delightful teacher and a strong coworker who provides his best to his students and colleagues every day. Chris is known for his ability to write Donors Choose Grants. This year alone, he has received funding for at least seven projects, acquiring the marching band quint bass and snare drum harnesses, a collection of Charles Mingus jazz music, drum stands, and music cases for his students. He has amassed thousands of dollars from Donors Choose alone. In his past, he has earned funds from the Rasmussen Foundation and the Eagle River Chamber of Commerce to better allow his students access to musical instruments, equipment, and music. Moreover, he takes the lead and willingly supports his coworkers in their effort to attain additional funds for their classrooms and students.
Chris also extends his professional passion to his staff. He spearheaded a drum line class at Service, cultivating not only a variety of students, but also teachers in that instrument. He graciously offered to tutor staff in percussion instruments, including his steel drum percussion set. He is admirable and thoughtful here to those who need it. He is currently PTSA liaison for staff, attending and facilitating monthly meetings between staff and parents. He provides his time to the feeder school, Hanshu Middle School, to cultivate not only those students' talents, but also the Service High School and Anchorage School District music programs. Finally, if anyone attends an event at Service, be assured Christopher Lubkin will be there, either as band conductor or who allows his students to shine for the community, or as a staff member supporting also the students, staff, and community. Monumental employees like Christopher Lubkin Monumental employees like Christopher Lubkin are highly deserving of the Denali Award. Please join us in thanking Christopher Lubkin.
Robin Wallace, please come forward. Robin Wallace is exceptional special education paraprofessional who strives for collaborative and cooperative working relationships with all involved in education and care of students with disabilities. She is patient and kind and doesn't give up on students. She sees their true potential. Mrs. Wallace seeks out training experiences and feedback to ensure she meets the needs of all students. She believes in effective, research-based behavioral management and instructional strategies. She is a behavior... and she follows each child's plan with fidelity to ensure positive progress is made. Robin is knowledgeable of best practice in working with a large range of disability categories, including autism spectrum disorders, serious emotional disturbance, and developmental and learning disabilities. She ensures students are educated in the least restrictive environment, in the general education classroom with their peers, providing the supports and resources needed. She ensures services provided are mutually beneficial and ethical.
Robin addresses the needs of students who often present significant challenges, even to those in the profession who are well-prepared and highly qualified. She is able to watch for potential problems and prevent escalation, and has the skills to manage crisis situations. Robin is an active listener, giving students total and complete focus. She listens closely and without judgment. Robin sets clear and positive limits by stating specific boundaries and following the behavior plans set for her students. She spends a great deal of time tracking behavior of students to identify the times when negative or disruptive behavior occurs in the classroom. She models pro-social skills such as cooperation, sharing work, and emotionally supporting others who are in distress. Robin offers choices instead of giving orders by presenting the student with a work task that needs to be accomplished, and then offering options of activities the student would like to engage in after the work task is completed. She is a true model of how paraprofessionals can change the trajectory of a child's life through inclusive practices. Please join us in thanking Robin Wallace.
And ladies and gentlemen, at this time, I would like to announce that we do have a reception for our awardees and their families and their fellow coworkers out in the atrium, as well as a small gift for you to go along with your award. And while you're out there as well, we want to let you know that the Transition Coffee Shop is open. They do take credit cards and cash tips, credit cards for the food, they tell me. But this is for our students with cognitive impairments that transitioned to job skills, and they wanted to be here tonight to demonstrate their skills. Welcome, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have a 15-minute recess. We'll be back at... Oh, no, right. All right, welcome back. At this time... Yes, at this time, I will turn this part of the program over to Dr. Bishop.
Thank you, Madam President. And later on the agenda, and because it's much later, and I know that Ellie Shaw is leaving because she's going to go study for a test, and we have lots of other educators in the room wanting to get ready for the second to the last day of school, that our president afforded me an opportunity to have a five minutes to share an introduction of some folks that are on the consent agenda for Personnel Report. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Stock very quickly because we have so many, we just want to share the joy.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. So we have a special treat tonight to introduce a lot of faces, some who are new to ASD and some are just new to a different school. This year's been an interesting year in terms of a lot of people leaving and turnover, a lot of things in our elementary principals ranks. And with that, I want to thank Dr... Doctor...not yet. Dan Barker. I want to thank Senior Director Dan Barker here, who's Dr. Dan, has a ring to it. So Dan's done a great job in trying to work in through how we could do this this year in a very organized way and give everybody an equal opportunity, both in the community side of this and also among our folks to do that. Dan did a great job with it. I'm going to turn it over to Dan. He's going to introduce people by name. You can stand up when it's your turn and wave at the board if you're here. And so, Dan, introduce them to us.
Thank you. So at first, I told them they were going to have to speak, but given the number of them, I figured we'd let them off the hook. We have over 23 elementary moves this year, so that's a lot to keep track of. We don't quite have all of them here, so there's a few that couldn't join us. They had other obligations and weren't able to make this match. So I'll read through names. Folks, when I read your name, if you would just stand up and wave, I'm going to give you the name of the... I'm going to give you the name of the individual or the name of the school and the individual who is the new principal at that school, okay? So Aurora Elementary will be Margaret Jones. And actually, I love Margaret. I'm going to applaud for her too. But for the rest of all of you who I love just a little bit less, let's do it all at the end, otherwise we're going to stop a lot, okay? Baxter Elementary, which is Doug Williams, and I didn't see Mr. Williams able to join us. Okay, Bay Shore, which is Anna Walker. Bear Valley, which is Nicole Shear. Chester Valley, which is Chris Woodward. Chinook Elementary, Lori Rekstachl. Chugiak, excuse me, Chugiach Optional Elementary, which is Joel Akers. Chugiak is in a second. Chugiak Elementary, which is Jackie Welge. Denali Elementary, which is Deana Beck. Homestead Elementary, which is Amy Kaler. Inlet View, which is Arthur Sosa. I don't see Arthur with us. Lakewood, which is Maria Hummaki. Mountain View, which is Claire Hill. Muldoon, which is Julie Siri. Northwood, which is Elizabeth Hornbuckle. North Star, which is Abby O'Neill. Ocean View, which is Kristy Von Walter. Rogers Park, Mary Wood. Russian Jack, Haley Donovan. Scenic Park, Marco Christian. Spring Hill, Lena Brower. Turnigan Elementary is Christine Dennis. Tyson Elementary is Shauna Booten. And Willow Crest is Ray Marshall. Okay, that is your swath of new elementary lead principals. Welcome, folks, and thank you.
Well, congratulations, leaders. I don't know, you guys looking real good and young, too. Or I'm getting old. But congratulations, and we look forward to the fabulous work you're going to be doing. All right. So at this time, we want to...
Madam President, I move we adjourn to executive session for the purposes of a student hearing.
Move in second that we adjourn to executive session for the purpose of student hearing. Is there any opposition to the motion?